Welcome to the November 9, 2017 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Shackleton, I think you've got the prayer and pledge and you have some guests.
I do. I want to introduce to you, Jason, if you'll come up to the mic. Jason Bennett's been involved in some really positive things in our community and as the weather gets a little colder, his folks' work becomes a little more challenging and I wanted to let him have an opportunity to talk a little bit to us and to the community about what he does with that group, but he's also involved in our program the last couple of weeks, organizing our community and helping to communicate who our community is and it's been a real positive thing and I thought he might want to talk just a little bit about that. So Jason, if you'll talk about what you're doing and then do our opening prayer. Appreciate it. Jason Bennett.
I'll do my very best. So I'm Jason Bennett and I'm the Director of the Murfreesboro Cold Patrol. It's a nonprofit here in Murfreesboro that works directly kind of hands-on outreach to folks that are experiencing homelessness in our community. We kind of, the name gives it away, but we do a lot of work in the wintertime. We help run those emergency shelters, the coldest night shelters in the wintertime and we actually start tomorrow night probably. It looks like 28, so we'll have some people that'll be sheltered. But we spend a lot of time connecting the dots for people that can't seem to get it, you know, they can't seem to figure out where the dots are, connecting them with the Journey Home and whatever place they need to get connected with. And so that's what we do. We love all of our community and especially people that are experiencing homelessness. We like to spend a lot of time with them. So that's the Murfreesboro Cold Patrol and if you guys want to find out more about us, you can go to our website. So Murfreesboro Loves, right? Do we get to talk about that a little bit?
Please.
I just want to thank the council and in our city and our first responders and the whole community, the businesses here, for the response that our community gave to really, really the whole world. Every headline that I've seen in every newspaper everywhere has been a completely different story than what Charlottesville had in August and that's a testament to who we are and who we aspire to be as a community. And so that thing was just started because we didn't want white supremacists driving the narrative in our community or any other people from outside of our community coming and driving a narrative. And I think we did a good job of that. The whole community did. So thank y'all. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll pray for you. God, thank you for this council, for our city, for Rutherford County. Thank you, God, that we have a community that loves each other. Lord, we have things that we need to work on, but I believe that we can come together and have compassion for the people that we may have differences with and try to understand each other a little bit better. And so I think that's a thing that we need to do between rallies is continue to work on those things and we hope that you'll help us do that. So Lord, I thank you for this council meeting and the ministry really that you've given these council members to lead our city and we just thank you for this time. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. All right. We don't have any ceremonial items tonight and you have consent agenda, but you also have a revised letter from the Recreation Director for item on the buy-one-get-one free facility passes and the donation of Ballfield Lights to Eagleville High School.
With those changes, I move for passage of the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
There's a question.
The amendment was to change it from donating the lights from Eagle High School to Eagle High School and St. Rose Lima Church. So that was the change if anybody's watching that closely. And I second the motion.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ47. Rezoning area along Medical Center Parkway is planned signage overlay PSO District.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ49. Rezoning area along Esquire Drive and Mary Beth Court to Single Family Residential RS6 District and Single Family Residential 12 RS12 District.
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item four has been withdrawn. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ51. Rezoning area along Burrows Avenue to Single Family Residential 6 RS6 District.
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. We'll consider for recommendations of the Fire Chief approval for construction of Fire Station 4 on Medical Center Parkway. Chief folks?
Mayor and members of the council, it's our recommendation to approve the bids that were open last week and the recommendations of John Trail, the architect with Johnson and Bailey Architectural Firms, Voice Ballard Construction LLC Incorporated as the winning bidder for the construction of Station 4 on Medical Center Parkway. Included in that bid, we're desiring to take the ad alternate. I think it's $5,185,000. We are also adding in a contingency because we have, within the bid, we put in basically per-unit arrangements. We think we've really got the amounts of the materials that are going to have to come out and the amount of field that's going to have to go back in or shot rock that's going to have to go back in to fill the site, but just in case there are variances in that, we have a per-unit price in the contract with Voice Ballard to make sure that we have that allowance in there. So we've placed a $500,000 contingency in there for anything with things that might happen with the site or any other things that may come up within the construction of the building as it relates to that for your approval as well. And this should easily get us underway with construction and get the Station 4 constructed on Medical Center Parkway.
No questions or comments for the chief. I move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH53 adopted by the City Council on October 12, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.25 acres along Halls Hill Pike from residential multifamily RM16 to Commercial Fringe CF District, Swanson Development LP applicant 2017-431. Notice said public hearing was published in October 23 issue of local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is a rezoning for property that's located at the northeast corner of Halls Hill Pike in Journey Drive. This is a parcel that's currently zoned RM16 residential multifamily with a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. Swanson Development has come to us with a request to rezone this parcel to Commercial Fringe. It's a one-and-a-quarter acre parcel. There is existing commercial in the area across Halls Hill Pike in the county and then also commercial in the area. You'll see the area that is Zone CL a little bit further to the east. That's developed with a self-storage facility, a car wash and a small retail center. That was also developed by Swanson Development. The property directly to the east that's in between the retail center and the subject property is vacant and it's also zoned RM16. And the property behind this property that's zoned RM16 and across Journey Drive is developed with a multifamily apartment complex. As I mentioned, the property is zoned RM16. The applicants are requesting to rezone it to Commercial Fringe for the development of a commercial use on the property. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends that the property develop as multifamily and we think that's more of a reflection of the current zoning of the property. There were certain instances where the existing zoning was used as the rationale for the future land use recommendation on the future land use map. And so the council will need to determine whether or not this is an appropriate instance to deviate from that recommendation of the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October 4 and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning to Commercial Fringe. Mr. Joe Swanson Jr. with Swanson Development is here representing the application and I believe that he would like to get up and say a word or two of why he feels the deviation from the 2035 comprehensive plan is appropriate in this instance. I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Swanson?
Mayor McFarland, council, staff, Joe Swanson Jr., 1188 Park Avenue. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to this application this evening. We've had this parcel of property quite a number of years, probably 10 years, and we feel like this is a corner lot. Kind of gives a buffer from the traffic, the street, commercial, then multifamily and then into single family. That was one of the logics with it. Also, the property to the east is zoned RM16. We made an attempt to have that property owner join in with us for a commercial zoning, but they were not interested at this time. I don't know that it will come before this council in the future, but we made that attempt. Commercial seems to be, since it's a corner lot, a better use for this particular parcel. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Joe, you can probably tell me quicker than I can find it on Google here. Is the RM16 property to the east, is there anything on that property?
It's a vacant lot. There is quite a CUD easement. There's several feet of frontage there that cannot be developed in the building. Yeah. And there is commercial across the street in the county. Neely's Market, if you're familiar with that. Temptation Club, VFW. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Swanson. All right, we're going to need to conduct a public hearing for this zoning request. If you want to speak at the public hearing, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address for the record. If you'll keep all your comments to the City Council. If there's any questions, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of an individual, you have three minutes. On behalf of a group, you have five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, come to the podium. Our public hearing is open. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ53 to rezonate an area along Halls Hill Pike as Commercial Fringe CF District 2017-431.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH54 adopted by the City Council on October 12, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 29.8 acres along Stones River Mall Boulevard from residential multifamily RM22 District to Park P District. City of Murfreesboro Administration Department applicant. Notice said public hearing was published in October 23, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Subject property is actually a piece of the Old Fort Golf Course. Somehow, years and years ago, the property was zoned RM22 and as you recall, we no longer have an RM22 district. We amended our zoning ordinance to remove the RM22 zoning district and so this is somewhat of a vestige of the old, of the previous zoning ordinance that had the RM22 zoning district. There seems to be no need for this to remain zoned RM22. It's developed with the Old Fort Golf Course. To my knowledge, the golf course isn't going anywhere anytime soon. So staff consulted with administration and administration agreed that it was appropriate to request the rezoning of this property to P Park District and the balance of the golf course is zoned P, so it's consistent with the use of the property and it's consistent with the zoning of the remainder of the golf course. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October 4 and unanimously recommended its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Is there such a thing as hole five zoning? Because I think this is hole five.
It's hole five.
This is the RM22. All right. We'll need to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ54 to rezonate an area along Stones River Boulevard as Park P District 2017-437.
This ought to be an easy one. Move for approval.
Second.
Move for approval for hole five.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH55, actually that's hole four. Yeah.
You said five.
Five, yeah. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH55 adopted by the City Council on October 12, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 1.17 acres along West Lidle Street from Commercial Highway CH District to Central Business Development CBD District. Chris Bilbro applicant 2017-432. Notice said public hearing was published in the October 23, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We're looking at the northern half of the block that is bounded on the, that is bounded by North Church Street, North Maple Street and West Lidle Street. It's currently zoned Commercial Highway. Been zoned Commercial Highway for years and years. However, Commercial Highway doesn't really fit the way it's developed. If you can picture this block, if you're all familiar with the corner of Church in Lidle where the AT&amp;T building is located and then the Cultivate Co-Working Building and also the back half of the Pinnacle Bank parking lot as well as the church there on the corner of Lidle and Maple and then there are three commercial buildings that front directly on Lidle. Mr. Bilbro came before us and with the discussion on the possibility of redeveloping the smaller parcels on Lidle Street. And, but with the Commercial Highway zoning, there was really no way that those parcels could be redeveloped. The Commercial Highway zone has 42-foot front setbacks, 20-foot side setbacks and the existing buildings on those parcels basically take up the entire parcels. In addition, the Commercial Highway zone has parking requirements where the Central Business District does not. The Commercial Highway zone has landscaping requirements where the Central Business District does not. So staff discussed the possibility of rezoning the northern half of this block with the Central Business District zoning district because those three parcels are essentially rendered useless for redevelopment if they're zoned the way they presently are zoned. And considering the proximity of this block to the new Judicial Center parking garage which offers free parking, the parking garage is directly across Maple Street from this block. Staff thought that this would be appropriate to kind of get out ahead of the downtown study that we're working on. Mr. Anthony in our department is diligently working on a downtown parking study and a downtown Central Business District expansion study that we hope to be bringing the findings of to the Planning Commission in the coming months. But in the meantime, this block seemed poised to be zoned Central Business District because of the difficulty that the property owners would face in redevelopment as well as the fact that the parking garage is so near to this block. And with the interest in redeveloping some of those parcels, we felt it appropriate for the applicant to move forward with this application. So the applicant has an interest in the three smaller parcels that I've circled. At the Planning Commission meeting on October 4, the Planning Commission studied the AT&amp;T building, the back half of the Pinnacle parking lot and the church that's located on the corner and agreed that it would be appropriate to recommend to the City Council that the entire northern half of this block be rezoned Central Business District. And the Planning Commission, after they held a public hearing on October 4, did make that recommendation. So Mr. Bilbro is here in the audience today. If you have any questions for him, I'll be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley.
Is the southern half of that block already zoned C?
Yes, sir. It is already zoned CBD and that would consist of the
Pinnacle.
The Pinnacle Bank, B. McNeils and the Center for the Arts right there.
Okay. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ55 to rezonate an area along West Lidle Street is CBD Commercial Business Development District 2017-432.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH56 adopted by the City Council on October 12, 2017, will conduct a public hearing to rezone approximately 2.7 acres along Ragland Avenue from Single Family Residential 10 RS10 District to Planned Residential Development PRD District, Walker Station PRD, Sourceland LLC is the applicant, 2017-436. Notice said public hearing was published in October 23, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our last public hearing tonight is a rezoning at the very eastern terminus of Ragland Avenue. Property is currently zoned RS10 and developed with one single-family residence. The applicant's Sourceland LLC, which is Laws Bolden and Taslundy, have requested rezoning to PRD for a residential development. And Mr. Rob Mulchan will get up in a moment. He has a PowerPoint presentation regarding the development which will be a horizontal property regime made up of single-family detached homes and he'll give you more information about that here just momentarily. The entrance to this property is off of Ragland Avenue which is accessed off of East Main Street. The, one of the commitments that the applicant is making is improving Ragland Avenue. Right now Ragland Avenue is substandard and has a narrow pavement width. They do plan on making off-site improvements to help facilitate traffic to and from this development. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan actually recommends that this property develop as public and institutional and staff believes that the recommendation of the plan was made with the expectation that MTSU would be buying this property at some point. MTSU about eight or 10 years ago bought quite a few parcels in the general vicinity. In fact, I'd say probably roughly half of the parcels in this area are owned by MTSU. However, the applicant has submitted correspondence from the university indicating that it does not wish to purchase the property at this time. And with MTSU not desiring to purchase the property, it leaves room for the potential to deviate from the recommendations of the comprehensive plan because as the comprehensive plan recommends that it develop as public institutional, if MTSU has no desire to purchase the property at this time, it kind of leaves some room for interpretation of what the appropriate land use for the property should be. But with that being said, I will mention that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on October 4 and unanimously recommended approval of this request. Mr. Rob Mulchan has a brief PowerPoint presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mr. Mulchan?
I never knew that. Mayor McFarland, members of the City Council, Rob Mulchan, SEC. I'm here tonight on behalf of Sourceland LLC to present to you Walker Station PRD. Here's an aerial image of the site itself in relationship to the area. As you can see to the north, you have the main body of the MTSU campus. Directly to the south, you have the soccer field complex that is associated with the MTSU as well. To the east, you can see there is a parking lot that is also part of the MTSU campus and then there's also another MTSU campus parking lot just to the west of the site. The remainder of the properties around this are single-family detached homes and then you can see off to the east, a large apartment complex as well. Zoning in regards to this is currently zoned RS10 or residential single-family. To the north and south, as you can see in the green is indicated as College University which is associated with MTSU on that side. So it's pretty much a university-type use or a residential use on that side. And then as I alluded to earlier, the campus crossing the apartments is a PRD just to the east of the area as well. Matthew talked about, as you can see, our site in relationship to the new 2035 land use plan. As you can see, the blue areas are associated with the public or institutional type uses. You can see in our area is a little yellow box there inside there. As Matthew talked about, we did reach out to the MTSU in regards to if they had any interest in this property. They did not. So we felt the next best use of this property was to come forward with a residential component that would then tie into the existing residential character of the area. This will also prevent, for this development if moves forward would provide potential housing for faculty and staff in regards to the MTSU campus. It is very good proximity for walking and or riding your bikes to and from your home to your potential job on that side. Next few slides, really quickly run through just some of the existing condition images that we've got in the site. This is at the end of Ragland Avenue, looking into the site itself. You can see the site is relatively well covered in different types of vegetation, trees and such on that side. Again, there's a view looking towards the south, towards the soccer complex, past the large row of tall trees there. So very, very well overgrown with growth on that side. This is from the site looking back on Ragland towards the west. You can see, as Matthew talked about, the substandard street section that we'll talk about improving here in a little bit. And these are next couple of images, a couple of the homes that reside in and around the project there on Ragland Avenue. Last image I have here is the image from MTSU campus. Alumni Drive is to the north of our site. This is along Alumni Drive looking back towards the property. You can see the heavy tree row, but you can also see the well-defined streetscape that MTSU has provided in regards to this. This is a private roadway, not a city roadway. We're asking for a planned residential district zoning on this. We're looking at 23 single-family detached cottage-style type homes. The site itself is roughly about 2.6 acres in size. So you're looking at a gross density of about 8.6 dwelling units per acre. In regards to this project, as you can see on the plan, there's roughly about 1.4 acres of open or grass space that's been preserved on this site in regards for use for the actual recreational areas or areas that are encompassing around the actual structures themselves, this yard area. These would be private streets/driveways within this development. So once you get into the development, will be solely HOA-maintained roadway structure on that. It makes this a very walkable community as well. We've put in a lot of different areas for sidewalks in and around the units. So you get a lot of good walkability within this. So it does create a recreational aspect to this as well as a good connectivity between each of the homes and actually the infrastructure towards MTSU. All units will be, sorry, all utilities will be underground as well. The main body of this project was to create a large lawn space. As you can see in this diagram here, all the homes, the majority of the homes, I should say, focus in on this large central lawn area. So the homes actually frame out this space. We kind of think of it more of like a campus quad in relationship to MTSU campus next door. So as you can see, it kind of does have a little bit of that mimic and I'll talk a little bit more in a little bit about some of these amenity features that's part of this overall amenity. The cottages in themselves will be two-story structures. They will be a cottage-style architecture. They will be a minimum 1,200 square feet of living space. They will be a mixture of two- and three-bedroom homes. Each home will have a rear patio with landscape screening around it and they will also be sold as a horizontal property regime. Building elevations, the front elevations will be a mixture of brick, stone and cementated fiber board. Vinyl only permitted in the trim, soffit and dormer areas. And the fronts of these cottages and playing into the overall appearance and scale of this project will have a covered front porch or stoop element incorporated into the architecture. Sides, cementated fiber board throughout with vinyl in the trim, soffit and dormer areas only and the same for the rear, cementated fiber board with vinyl only trim and soffit areas. And the same for the rear, cementitious fiber board with vinyl-only trim and soffit areas. Getting back to the amenities, as I talked about, the main focal amenity, this is the lawn area. We've incorporated a couple of different amenity items to go along with this. Of course, the main feature is the actual lawn area. This space actually measures about 90 feet wide by 140 feet, you know, in length across there. So it's a pretty sizable area, a great lawn kind of space for, you know, residents of this development to, you know, utilize their frisbee, soccer, playing catch, football, baseball, that kind of stuff. So it's a good space for everybody that lives here to get out and active in the area. Well, the amenities will actually be incorporating monument signage and/or monuments at the entrance to the development, kind of signifying welcoming yourself to Walker Station. We'll also be incorporating a couple of bench areas, the north and south end of this. So as we feel, as you can see, the actual green space is actually lined by sidewalks. So there's a very good recreational exercise loop on that side. So we felt that it would be advantageous to go ahead and put in some beach, sorry, bench areas with some trees and such around there to create a very, you know, well-shaded kind of area for those hot summer months on that side. Also incorporating a bike rack and a mail kiosk, so the mail will be delivered to a mail kiosk for the entire development on that side. And the main focal feature of this development, of this portion, is the fire area and seating area on the centralized backside of this. So this is the main gathering space for the residents and a great place for socialization between each other, and also a nice place, especially in the, you know, cool fall and winter months that we got a chance to get out and actually utilize the fire pit itself. As Matthew talked about, our access will be provided all the way off of East Main Street. We'll utilize a couple of the streets in the Ragland Development Area to get back to Ragland Avenue. As you can see, the development actually is at the end, the terminus of Ragland Avenue. And we'll also be incorporating, as part of this development, about 400 feet of Ragland Avenue is somewhat unimproved, so we'll be going back and improving that to a 22-foot pavement section with two-foot gravel shoulders to get that road up to a standard cross-section to get ourselves with ample access for residents and/or services. Again, the main access point there, as you can see, will be extending out into Ragland Avenue, bringing it into a terminus point inside there, so the green space actually accesses the terminus of Ragland Avenue with the houses as a backdrop. We're also incorporating a sidewalk stub to the north towards Alumni Drive. Our hope and wishes that as we develop this, that MTSU will come back and provide a connection from our property line back to the sidewalk along Alumni Drive. Like I said, this is the anticipation is hopefully these units will be sold to staff or, you know, faculty in regards to the university. This will provide a very easy access back to the campus in regards to walking or riding a bike to get to your job or, you know, to go teach class. I appreciate your time and consideration of this development tonight, and I'll be available for any questions now. We're up to public hearing. Thank you.
Do you anticipate more staff, or do you anticipate it being more students?
I would think, you know, from a sales standpoint, since these are going to be sold, these are going to be more towards a, you know, more of a staff environment kind of things. I mean, it's a great little niche things, you know, like I said, 1,200 square feet's a good size for, you know, an instructor or, you know, professor of the campus on that side. So we feel that would be a very good spot for university professors to have a real quick access to their job and a very good, nice neighborhood to live in as well.
Okay. Only thing I'd ask, I think it's a great idea what you're doing. I think the plan is really good, but I would ask, knowing some of the things that we've been dealing around the campus, if this is going to, as a dense of a development, it would be good to have some kind of security plan that you're giving us on how you're handling lighting and some of those things in place that would be part of the PRD.
Correct. We'll be incorporating a lighting plan. So when we get to the site, when we get to the site plan level with this, we'll be incorporating a lighting plan that'll come back for staff to evaluate on that side, and we'll also evaluate from the safety standpoint as well.
All right. Any other questions?
Is there any, I know the road improvements are to a certain point. Has traffic told us that the additional connectivity of that road improvements? Are we just going to that point, and that's okay?
Mr. Shacklet, when we met with Mr. Mulchan initially and his clients, the main concern was the width of the pavement cross-section on Ragland. As you get further east towards this property, it necks down to about 16 feet, which is really not enough room for two cars to pass each other. You know, I imagine that through the years, because it's been less dense over there, that the residents have just made do. But since we're adding 20 some odd new dwelling units to this property, we made sure we communicated to the applicants that we wanted the road improved to a minimum width so that cars can pass each other, and so that our city service vehicles will be able to continue to travel down this road. And they were very receptive and willing to make those improvements off-site.
But what it showed on the plan, though, was it went to a certain place, and it didn't connect into a major. The improvements are not going to carry you all the way through the Ragland into the rest-
What we identified was where, because the road actually increases in width the further west you go. So what we did, we identified a point where it was already at an acceptable width-
I got you.
-and asked them to make improvements up to that point.
That makes sense, okay.
All right. All right, we'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ 56 to rezonate an area along Ragland Avenue is planned residential development PRD District, Walker Station PRD, 2017-436.
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll consider recommendations. The Planning Commission has scheduled public hearings for an annexation plan of services and annexation along Manson Pike, zoning along Manson Pike, annexation plan of services and annexation along Florence Road, zoning along Florence Road with annexation to a PRD, rezoning to, from RS 10 to PRD, RSA to Type 2, and rezoning from RS 10 to RSA Type 2, annexation plan of services and annexation along Manson Pike and Florence Road, and zoning along Manson Pike and Florence Road to PRD. Mr. Baumley, what's the date you're thinking?
Mayor McFarland, we would recommend December 14th for public hearings for all six.
Move approve the recommendation.
Second.
I will not be here the 14th, but Ms. Skels Harris, I know will ably be able to take care of everything. All right, we have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for recommendations the Assistant Sea Manager the demolition of a building at 640 West Main Street, former room at the end.
Mayor, the survey by the environmentalists and the removal of the asbestos has been complete. We wanted to pass this in front of you one more time before we actually began the demolition of the building. We'll continue to plan that into the future site for Street Department and the training center that exists there today. But we recommend to you now proceeding with the demolition of the structure.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one beer permit, Ms. Wright.
We do. We have a new location at 2320 Mercury Boulevard that would like to sell beer. The background check is in order. They do need to finish their building codes inspection, so if you approve it tonight, we won't issue that permit until they finalize those inspections.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one recommended for a future appointment, a Ms. Beth Brown, who would be taking Shane Reeves' spot on the tennis committee. We have one statement to be paid.
Is this being paid to the Chamber of Commerce? Is that where this is?
That's where it will go, to their CBB. That's the division they have for these. This is gate receipts that we collected, and now we're giving them their share.
Do they get a percentage of the gate? Is that what it is? Or do they get all the gate?
They get a percentage of the gate. This is for the girls' state soccer tournament. They get a contracted percentage of the gate. Is that right?
I want to call this a second.
Well, I've seen the form, and there was more collected than what we're paying them. So I'm not quite sure how the-
Yeah, it says share of the gates.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how it was computed, but this is not out of the norm. We've done this before.
Who supplies the manpower to manage the gates during the girls' state soccer tournament?
I might call over.
I'm going to move that we defer this payment.
Okay.
This was the tournament on the 28th, is that right?
It was October, I mean, it was the 28th, Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Smotherman, I think that the Tennessee Soccer Association manages the gate, because I had worked with them on a letter that we sent out to their entire group based on what was happening that Saturday, and I'm pretty sure they do it, but I couldn't say positively.
Do they get the other percentage of the gate?
Yes.
The soccer?
Yeah. Or, it's either that, or it may be Murphysboro Soccer works that as well. So I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, the part we collected went into our revenue, and we're paying now a portion to this group.
So we get part of the revenues?
We do get part of it. I just don't know how, what the percentage was.
I'd just like to see the breakdown of it. I probably should ask before the meeting, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Anybody have an issue with that? Okay, all right, we'll move on. We've got one item that want to, for under other business, we have an amendment to the minutes that we passed on September 28, 2017. At the very bottom, there was an ordinance passed in the minutes stating it was on second reading, it was actually on first reading. So if we could get a motion to amend the September 28, 2017 minutes to make sure Ms. Machado's record's correct, that would be great.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second to amend the September 28, 2017 minutes.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You also have a letter from staff regarding a recommendation from the Human Resources Department on the Christmas gifts for part-time employees.
Mayor, we've found that we have a problem with our payroll software, that where our part-time employees, our permanent part-time employees, that will receive $25 gift this year that you budgeted for them. We have difficulties entering noncash payments into the system when they are not actually getting paid for hours worked that week. The largest percentage of our part-time permanent employees work for Parks and Recreation primarily in the summer and spring seasons and are not currently actively at work. So we've got no way to actually make that payment through the chrono system. In talking with Human Resources this morning, we think the right suggestion is to actually produce a payroll. In fact, we'll go as far as suggesting for both the $50 for the full-time employees, the $25 for the part-time employees, as really a simplification for administration of our Christmas gift program. The payroll is relatively quick and easy to generate as compared to the procurement of some 1,300-plus gift cards. Provides the employee perhaps some flexibility in choosing how they would like to spend their Christmas gift. You have budgeted $50 for full-time employees, $25 using the payroll system allows us to take the taxes and the social security out of that. So their net check will be $48 for full-time employees with some change, and $24 or so for the part-time permanent employees. We'd recommend, we still have time to implement the gift cards if council would like to do that. But I think just out of ease of administration, we'd say let's produce a payroll run. It would go out on December 15th.
Mr. Crumbly, Crumbly, I'm sorry. I just heard you say when it comes out of the payroll, that means we're taking taxes, so the $50 will go down to $48 something, and the part-timer go down to $23 something. If my math is correct, we have about 900 full-time and about 435 part-timers that we're giving-
It's pretty close.
...Christmas gifts to. If my calculation is correct, if we go on and make that a round figure for full-time, make them actually get $50 and make the part-timers get their $25 instead of the $18 something, that's going to be roughly $900 more, so are my figures pretty close?
That is possible. We did discuss this morning that, you know, the payroll taxes, both social security and income taxes, we could, with council's approval, we did not budget that amount, but we could bump up the amount enough to make the check coming to employees an even $50 or an even $25.
But they were paying that already, even if they got a gift card, weren't they?
Yes, and that's where the hang-up on the permanent part-time-
Theoretically, this is the same amount we were giving them. If we hand them a $50 gift card, we're still going to take the $2 and-
Absolutely.
-change out of their check.
Absolutely. And that's where the problem came up on those part-time employees, is they are not on the payroll right now. So we didn't have any way to implement that tax on their fringe benefit that you're giving them as a Christmas gift.
Man, and the one thing, too, you maybe could consider, too, is-
I'm good.
Yeah, well, I was going to say that, this just dawned on me. If you're giving somebody a gift card to spend at a specific place, not only, they're also having to pay nine and three-quarters percent sales tax on that gift card, so really it's only about a $45 gift card because they're having to spend it, so-
I heard myself-
We keep on, they're going to owe us money. Maybe we better stop where we're at.
Just forget I said, just forget I said I heard myself talking, it didn't make sense.
No worries. All right, so I'll say, thank y'all for bringing this back up, because we brought this up last year, that, you know, we'd heard from employees that instead of giving them a gift card to someplace they have to go, is now, here's $50, go eat dinner somewhere, do whatever you want to do with it. You may want to buy a Christmas gift for someone. So I like this better.
My main concern is that we did include the part-timers, so I'm good.
Does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a Community Development Affordable Housing Assistance Program for 2961 South River Boulevard, Unit B2.
Mayor, this is your typical program for helping first-time homebuyers. This particular case happens to be a city employee, but we'd recommend your approval. The closing is scheduled for November 17th, and as it stands right now, we don't believe council will meet before that.
We need a motion. You need a motion on this.
We just need a motion to approve.
Yeah, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Yeah.
Mr. Smotherman was the-
Who was the second?
Mr. Wade.
Mr. Wade, okay. I missed, I couldn't hear. Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business for council?
We were supposed to sign something tonight.
Christmas, the Christmas-
Kenya had sent us an email about signing something tonight, the Christmas cards.
I, you'll see me after, I'm pretty sure it's in the folder, it's in the office. But I think the reason that it's not ready is because it said gift cards on there, and she was waiting to see what we were doing. If you don't mind, maybe end of the week, first of next week, stop by and just sign that. It's our Christmas letter.
Mayor, if I may, on behalf of our planning director, Mr. Whitaker, I would like to encourage If you don't mind, maybe, you know, the week first and next week, stop by and just sign that. It's our Christmas letter.
Mayor, if I may, on behalf of our Planning Director, Mr. Whitaker, I would like to encourage everyone who might be watching this tonight to complete the forms for the spatial census and get those turned back into the city. You can also go online and do it that way, if that is easier for you, but please, complete the spatial census forms. It will mean a substantial amount of money to the city, so thank you.
I told Mr. Smotherman, he called in, Eddie called in to WGNS on Wednesday, yeah, yesterday morning, so it was the first time I'd ever received a letter from me to me. And literally, it took 30 seconds to put your code in, list who lives in your house, and put your address, and that's it. And so, if you're a resident out there, the reason that we're doing this, we're not trying to count where, who you are, where you live. We're talking about $2.5 to $3 million of state shared funds that we would get from getting our additional, our account accurate, so that's how we keep your taxes and not having a property tax increase for how many years?
Almost 20.
Almost 20 years. So please fill that form out. That would be beneficial to not only the city, but to you later on down as we start working on our budget. All right.
And that code that you're talking about is on the outside of the envelope. It's a six-digit number that...
Is on the back of the yellow census card that is inside the envelope.
Yeah, top right-hand corner.
It's two locations, okay.
Yep.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add one thing, although I'm going to get killed for it. I'd like to call attention to one of our longtime employees, George Michado. She passed her 35th anniversary with the city last week.
All right. She's on TV now, and so, Ms. Michado, for those of y'all who are out in TV land, Ms. Michado, all the minutes, all of these agendas, we could not do what we do without you putting all the information together, and thank you for keeping me in line, so...
It is a tough job.
It actually is.
It does, it's wonderful. Not keeping you in line, keeping us all in line.
I know what you meant.
Keeping us all in line. We miss her when she goes on vacation.
Ms. Wright, she's never called me Mayor Bragg before.
I heard you call Ms. Tucker, Ms. Wright, so...
I did. All right. Before this gets off the rails, we're going to stand adjourned.